Right now.
Paul, you're muted.
Yeah, let me try that again. I was counting boxes. So I think we have a quorum here. So I am going to call the meeting of the Board of Education reporter. And ask that you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Which is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And tonight, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Crabtree are excused. Like to begin, please, with a moment of silence. For the following. Rhonda L. Stoles, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Christopher J. Zabinski, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Joyce A. Simmons Hendrickson, a graduate, North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Hey, today's, tonight's presentation is going to be these results of the staff survey. And you have on in your agenda, you have the complete survey and you have the presentation that I believe Mr. Bowles is going to take us through right now.
So I've just shared the screen and there's a little bit of a summary. This went from October 26 through November 2. And sent to families in LA and via email and posted on the website. We had 900 responses and 360 comments were received. So one of the first questions that we're looking at is, what instructional model do you teach? And as you can see by the largest bar, most people had responded the hybrid, both in school and at home, which was very similar to what we saw in the parent survey. One of the other questions that we took a look at is which forms of communication are you using to communicate with the students and families? And please select all that apply. So with the staff, you can see that email messages was the most frequent, along with phone calls. There were 462 responses to that. Last week, when we took a look at the parent survey, the parents, the highest bar was the weekly schedule, which is on the far left, and then also email. So email messages seems to be a favorite, but there is just a difference between the weekly schedules versus the phone calls. So I think the parents like the weekly schedule because they can see what's going on for their children for the entire week. But making the individual phone calls is more personable. So in this question, which of the following state recommended instructional experiences do you offer to your students most frequently? And as you can see, the highest bar talks about providing some online instructional meetings, Zoom, Google Meet, was the highest response. And the second highest was providing some instructional videos. And the third was assigning online modules or tasks. Again, we're finding that the, I think the popular model is having some face-to-face interaction. We're finding that our students really miss in need to that dialogue. So you can have some back and forth. And when you see posting questions online for discussion, having the opportunity to have that dialogue, especially when at least there's someone else there to respond to, seems to be the favorite. So question here, which statement best reflects your experience with requesting online application? So we took a look at this one here, and it looks like there was 143 that talked about the district has been extremely responsive and responding to their requests. And then with 267, the district has been somewhat responsive and responding to requests. I think what happened here is there came a time where we were trying to streamline what was out there as far as technology. And in trying to hone in on some of the things, a lot of people, we weren't allowing everything to be offered as far as technology, especially since we're trying to look at EdLaw 2D and trying to streamline some things. Which of the following forms of professional development for digital technology do you find most helpful? So in looking at this, it is very clear, and we made a conscious effort in the spring during budget time because we knew the need for technology was going to be extensive. But one-to-one scheduling the tech coaches in the building so they could have access and be able to have personal tutorials on different, different things that they can use technology-wise. Because when you have a question, if you're just trying to go from either notes or certain things that someone sends you, there's nothing like having an individual that can model. You can try it. They can tell you the pros and cons of things. Where you can do things over and over. So that individual time is the most favorite. And then the second is having an instructional video that you can look at on your time. And then you can either stop it, start it, replay it, almost like a YouTube video. Looking at this next one. Please select the choice that best reflects your response to the following statement. The instructional model implemented at my grade level supports effective teaching and learning in the current environment. So if you look here, we almost have a 50/50 as far as agree versus disagree. A lot of people are concerned about the hybrid model. The hybrid model is not ideal. But it does allow for smaller classes where you can split your class. And some come on Monday, Tuesday, the other Thursday, Friday. But trying to, to do both has been challenging for, for many people during the year. And that's been, that's been mentioned over and over again. Please select the choice that best reflects your response to the following statement. My current overall workload. Without question, you can see the bar to the far left. Most people have said significantly more than last year at this time. Usually it's above 80%. Some say slightly more, but I think what most people are feeling is the strain of trying to provide instruction in this model and trying to do in-person as well as remote at the same time. Please select the choice that best reflects your response to the following statement. I know how to access mental health resources and support for myself at work. As you can see, between agree and strongly agree, there's probably at least 84% are stating that. And stating that there is a higher need for their overall personal mental health and wellbeing. People are trying to balance the needs of work, which from the previous is greater, but also the mental health needs around family, around significant others, around possibly parents that are more senior. And people are doing a lot of things outside of the work environment that are really causing stress overall. This next slide doesn't vary very much, but the question, I know how to access mental health resources and support for my students. I think we talked about this earlier and we had Lisa Goldberg also talking about a lot of the SEL supports that are put on our webpage and placed in spots for people to access so that we can support the social emotional needs of our students. Again, our students are, that are home on days when they're not in school. There's been a strain on family and issues around the family dynamics that are really changing the student's experience. And what we know, students miss being in school. You can talk to adolescents all you want, and they may have said they hated school, but students need the socialization, and that's a part that they're not getting right now. And we're starting to see that have a greater effect. This one is which of the following items should be a priority of the district in the next 10 weeks? So some of the bars that you are seeing, support for teachers and social emotional over here in the far left. But right here, the, one of the far right, it talks about providing training for parents. And now, and as you finish it, I believe it continues about social emotional learning for training for parents. And this one in the middle, providing parent training on how to use, and how to use Google and some of the technology. Because what, what teachers were finding is students might not be having as much success because of certain technology issues. And if there was more training for the parents that can support students with that, that would be a benefit. So those are the highlights of the survey. And some of the takeaways that will, we can talk about are, now stop, share. The biggest thing that we're finding when you talk to staff is that they want more time. They need more time for professional development to learn certain things. And the days, the school day doesn't provide that. And they're spending much more time trying to prepare lessons in this new environment that's kind of eating up all their excess time. I talked about the one-to-one coaching. Our technology people, they can't ask for, for better. I think overall, in the perfect world, if we had a technology coach in every single building, that would be ideal. But again, we're not, we're not there yet, but we have three people spread across for 11 buildings, which makes it a little more challenging. So that's another just thing that we're seeing that they would like. And again, the, the model is what we were seeing is just, it's just, it has challenges. And so those are some of the, the big takeaways, along with the, the need for SEL support. As things continue to, to grow right now, especially the numbers in the county, it does put a strain on our resources. And as you see, where people have to go remote, we are struggling with finding subs when people have to either be quarantined or cannot be at school. Any questions that people have? All right. As you see from what we've been submitting today, again, is just from the weekend, there are more and more issues that are coming around due to COVID-19. And I'll share some more specifics during superintendent's comments as we move through the, through the meeting.
Dan, I, I don't know if I have a question. I'm just that slide, it was in reference to the model, it kind of jumped out at me, and you did just a direction, and you did say that the model is not perfect. I, I don't know, I just, it disturbed me a little bit, that the 50/50. That's an awful lot of disagrees. And when I'm looking at the question, and maybe I'm reading too much into this. I mean, there, the question is, does it support effective teaching and learning in the current environment? And I guess that that's just disturbing, but I guess you're aware of that. And I mean, what, what do we do? What do we do with this?
Well, we're trying to take a look at how we can do two things, meet, meet student, student needs, but do something that's viable and doable. In the, in the perfect world, you would want to be able to have kids in front of you. But as you look, when you're trying to maintain social distancing, trying to keep people safe, we, we cannot put too many kids in the classroom. So in splitting it is the, the best way we, we can at this point. And trying to provide as much professional development to allow teachers to become experts at what they're doing. But it takes time to get them to do that. And back in the day, we would pull people and pull groups of 20 or 30 people and pull them out for the day and do a full-day PD. We, we can't do that right now because you can't get enough subs to cover to do those type of things. And because we're not seeing students five days a week, teachers don't want to be out of their classroom because they're going to miss kids. So it's a catch-22 there. Nobody's fault, it's just, they know they want to be in the classroom as much as possible. But, so we're looking at PD opportunities that meet their needs. So if you do a video and it's posted and they can pick and choose, I may be a night owl. So after my kids go to bed, I may want to look at that at 10 o'clock at night. For some people, that doesn't work. They need someone right by them to, to work through some certain things, but we only have three tech coaches. So we're, we're, we're looking at some other options.
Well, I, I don't even know how to formulate a good question, but so just because of the large number of people who responded to this, that we're in the hybrid model, we're pretty sure most of these disagrees are probably because of a hybrid. They're not just remote-only people. I mean, that's where the bulk of the problem is, assuming is with the hybrid. All right, well, thank you. Any other questions? Sorry. None, I'm going to move to, sorry, I'm multi, I've kind of got another computer up and running here that shut down on me. The Board of Education Committee reports. And I'll just start with Mr. Crabtree does have a legislative committee meeting Monday, or today's Monday, Wednesday. It's via Zoom, it is a five, at this point in time, I'm probably going to chair that for him. It's a substitute, because he is not expecting he'll be participating. But we are going forward with that, and that'll be this Wednesday. And the Zoom link, I think, is going out, I think, this is tomorrow morning. And Ms. Scanlon, any reports on policy?
I do. So we had a policy committee meeting last Tuesday, November 10 via Zoom. And we reviewed 10 policies. Eight of the policies are on tonight's agenda for board approval. And two were tabled until the next meeting. So of the eight, three are, we're recommending to re-adopt without changes. And five, we're recommending to amend and re-adopt. And our next meeting is December 15.
Okay, thank you very much. Superintendent comments, Mr. Bowles.
Hey, thank you. First, I want to start out by saying that the North Syracuse Early Education Program tested approximately 90 adults and students today, first day of testing, because we do have buildings in the yellow zone. And all came back negative. So that was a positive experience for negatives. So again, that was a plus today. Also, since we have information about schools in the yellow zone, over the weekend, a letter came out, an addendum from the Department of Health, because the last information that we had was that we would have to continue to test 20% of our teachers and students each week, but not the same group. This addendum, where Superintendent and the Department of Health were on the Zoom this morning, states that if we test 20%, and over the two-week period, we are below what the county's average is for that school, that school will no longer need to continue to test each week. So again, if, if the school's average is below what the county average is after their first round of testing, that will be it. They won't need to test anymore. So what the county is now doing is they're trying to ensure that they get to all of the schools, not only in our district, but in other districts, to do these tests of asymptomatic students and adults so that the results that they get hopefully will be below what the county's is. And then they won't have to continue to do this week in and week out. So we have one right now is definitely, because there was, there was, there was no students that were positive, that's going to fall below that. So Main Street's not, should not have to test again. We have three schools that are scheduled to be, to test tomorrow. They're all elementary schools. They are Allen Road, Roxell, and Bear Road. So we'll be looking at what comes out of those buildings, but we're hoping that, again, they don't have to do any more testing. And then we just have two more schools left. One would be Rox Middle, and the other would be the Junior High. And I'm waiting for a schedule from the county as far as when they're going to set them up. At least one of them will be at the tail end of this week, and the other will be probably Monday at the latest Tuesday of next week. So that our district will be done with their testing as long as we continue to be below what the county is. So that was, that was a good news story there. And the, the best news that I got for the day was I received an email from one of our, our teachers at Rox Middle that students there won first place in the virtual bridge competition at CMY Bridges, build them and then bust them. So they basically look at architectural kind of engineering of a structure. And we came in first place in the virtual bridge competition. And category one, there were six teams, 13 students total, who built bridges at home using a kit of materials. They prepared them, they prepared things that they got information from the most in a couple of videos that Colleen O'Connor put together for the students, and we did quite well. So I'm very proud of those students and Mrs. O'Connor for that accomplishment. And that is the end of my superintendent's comments.
Hey, thank you. Any Board of Education comments? Bob didn't give me anything to substitute for him for Board of Ed comments. He just told me to help out with legislative on Wednesday. So anybody else like to fill that slot? Any comments?
Dan and I have actually been working with the canteen quite a bit and coordinating their efforts. We're finding that the canteen knows a lot about the kids that we're not finding out through the schools. And they're adding another level of ability for the kids to reach out and talk. There's, they've opened up the canteen on Tuesdays and Thursdays for a limited number of kids to come in and get help with the issues that they're having. Either there isn't a parent at home to help with the technology, or maybe home is a distracting environment. And they are going to open up the canteen two days a week early for them to come in. Again, limited basis. But through the conversations, we found that there might be some, some things going on with the kids that needs to be brought back to the schools and vice versa. So we've opened up the lines of communication to a level that I'd hoped it would reach. It's definitely getting there.
Thank you. Any other comments? A, seeing any, we're going to move on to routine action items. If I get a motion for A, which is consideration of the approval of the minutes of the last meeting of the board. Motion from, this is where you raise your hand, Mr. Harrington, Second, Maurizio, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. I'd like to make a motion for B, C, and D to be brought together. They are the considerations of classification of disabled students for special led by the district committee, for the disabled students for preschool and for the Home Instruction Review Committee students. So if I could get a second on that. Second, from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. I get a motion for E, consideration of contract award, motion from Mr. Herman, second from Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? I'll just say, as you said, I think at the last meeting, Mr. It looks like we had a significant number of submissions for that. Well, thank you. Any comments?
No, this is going to be a great project, though, to just enhance the security of that Allen Road entrance. And we're happy we can make the modifications at a reasonable price and, and secure that entry that much more than it already is.
A, seeing no other comment, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Okay, I'd like to, motion for A, it's a refunding bond resolution, motion please. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Scanlon. Any discussion on this? And I don't know if Mr. Keegan wants to make a comment, but we are refunding bonds and getting new ones that are going to be at a, I guess, a significant lower interest rate.
That's exactly it. It's about $6 million worth of serial bonds. And with the interest rates the way they are right now, we can, we can refinance the metal loan rate and save the district quite a bit of money over time. So it's a good move.
And I believe this is a roll call vote. So go ahead, Mrs. Gibson.
Okay, Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Michael Maurizio.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Mark Thorne.
Hi.
A motion carried. Motion please for item B, resolution authorizing participation in NYSMEC for electricity. Motion from, help me out here, Ms. Scanlon, second from Mr. Maurizio, any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. And C, resolution authorizing participation in natural gas from the same entity. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that it's carried. Motion for surplus of marketable, non-marketable surplus, sorry. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Maurizio, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. I get a motion to place the policies together, it'd be E, F, G, H, I, N, J, motion from Ms. Scanlon. It's second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion or questions on those policies that are before us? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, policies are carried, thank you. Just to acknowledge the retirement, we had some retirements on the personnel reports today. Albert DeJohn, Custodian One, retired with 18.3 years of service. And Pauling Wickelman, Bus Driver, retired with 30.3 years of service. So thank you very much, those who have many years of service, that's fantastic. So thank you very much, those two, for that many years of service. That's fantastic. And personnel report A, I get a motion, put that before us. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on personnel report A? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Personnel report B, support staff, motion to put that before us. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, that motion is carried. At this time, I will make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of two individuals with no action to follow. If I could get a second for that. Second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, we are going into executive session. I just need a motion for adjournment. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, we are adjourned. So if you'll leave the meeting, Mrs. Gibson did send us, there's another link for our executive session. See you soon.